Seven, ten. Welcome, everybody, to a lovely evening to be in a school board meeting. First item, agenda amendments. Do we have any amendments to our agenda that we know of?
I don't think so.
I have one question. Are we having an executive session now?
Yes, we're going to talk about contracts.
Because I have a personal issue with the executive session.
Okay.
It's an inquiry.
All right. No other agenda amendment items? All right. We'll move on to public comments regarding current and future agendas. We have some public here, but they're coming up next. Next, John?
Next.
Not this, not right now.
Not right now. Right up here.
Yeah. Any comments over from here? Not yet, or?
Not yet, sir.
Okay. Very good. All right. Motion to adopt the minutes of the March 11th board meeting. Can I have that motion, please?
I'll make the motion.
Motion by Greg. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by John. Any discussion, concerns?
Yeah, I glanced, I didn't get a copy, written copy of the, of the minutes. There was a couple of things that came up, but the one that I do remember is it had me voting for my own position of vice chair. And I know I didn't, I didn't make that motion.
Very supportive of you.
It wasn't very nice.
You really wanted it, I think you did.
I haven't seen if somebody could check it. It either had me voting for making the motion or seconding it.
You seconding it, so I had you as first.
No, I'm in motion.
Do we know who's?
I don't know who seconded it, but I didn't. I know that.
Thank you for picking that. I can go back and...
I think Father Bob was sitting next to me and said...
I think he did too.
Thank you.
Sounds right.
Yep. You wanted to do it yourself?
Yeah, all right.
There was, there were two other minor things, but that was the one that really stuck out to me.
I can have it.
Any other discussion on those minutes? Very much. All in favor of the motion to adopt the minutes of March 11th, 2019? Is anybody saying aye?
Aye.
As amended? Thank you. All opposed? As added, no queries? Thank you. And now, we're ready for student presentations and recognitions. Would you want to go to John for that?
Absolutely.
Mr. John Lumsden.
For your time?
Yep.
So I'm here this evening to recognize a couple of championships that happened the last couple of weeks. First, I'd like to introduce the Skvitsky, Miss Parks to come on out, and they will introduce members of the indoor track team.
So this is our indoor team. So we have Ruth Brechner here, Danielle Cummings, Anna Brechner, and Kaylee, and that's Callie. And we were quite successful at our indoor state meet in, when was it? I don't know, but it was. But, um, so to start the day off, we won the four by eight hundred overall in the state, and that is Ruth, Anna, Callie, and myself. And then, at the end of the track meet, we also won the four by four hundred meter relay overall in the state again, with Ruth, Danielle, Anna, and myself. And then, in between all of that, Miss Anna Brechner here, won the three hundred meter dash for Division Two. So, yeah, that's pretty much it.
Congratulations.
Are you girls good enough, are you young ladies good enough to greet the boys here in the high school?
Oh, yeah.
Great, the record's reached.
So if you're going to have a race, go race the girls, just to let you know about them.
They came in third, right, John?
What's that?
Overall?
Yep.
As a team, right?
As a team, yeah.
Third in the state out of fifteen teams?
That's excellent.
That's incredible.
And lastly, this evening, I would like to bring up an assistant coach, Mr. Brian Forten, of the girls' ice hockey team, as they are state champions in Division Two Girls' Ice Hockey. And they would like to present the board some hardware that comes with it. So we have the girls' ice hockey team. Congratulations, ladies.
Thank you.
Yeah, I see him right there on the table. Just pass him.
Oh, my goodness.
Thank you.
Division Two.
So we were the seventh seed playing the eighth seed. So you wouldn't stop.
Can you introduce each of yourselves so that we can...
Okay, I'm Callie Parks.
I'm Renee Richard.
I'm Vanessa.
I'm from Reagan, Oklahoma. Who is it for?
Brian Forten.
Who are you?
Actually...
So for the seniors, Callie, myself, and Reagan, this is our third championship for the hockey team.
So this one was...
Special for us.
Their time's a charm.
Yeah, there you go. It was a great game, though. They would win at the down there. We're excited to be there. They did a great job.
Thank you.
Score of the game was?
Three to one.
Three to one. And they just had a girls' ice hockey set up there, which is a few summers ago, recognizing all their accomplishments, including jackets, and also some plaques that you'll see around here for job well done. So congratulations.
Congratulations.
Very, very good. All right. The name's told, there's always such management for kids.
Not tonight.
Presentation tonight.
He's going back to them?
There is a state stem fair.
These are private, these are for the school, right? These are going to stay in the school, sorry.
I guess we're not going to be able to put off that trophy case, too.
Right.
I guess we're going to take up some space, for sure. Beautiful.
All right, where are we at now?
Stem Fair presentation.
All right.
Mr. Ballard is here, yeah, absolutely.
Welcome. So I'm Rich Ballard. I am the stem fair coordinator for MBU, and this year, we had a very successful local stem fair. We had actually more people than the entire state of Vermont, though the state fair had. We had a hundred and sixty or a hundred and fifty-five kids, and they only had a hundred and forty. They did a couple of things to limit the number of people that could come, so that's why theirs was a little lower, but I was kind of proud of that, because ours was actually bigger than theirs. But we had a really nice, good fair, and we had one of our best state fairs this year. And so we were really excited about the way the kids presented themselves. Okay. Kaylee here. Make sure that she was already seen. All these kids have to repeat themselves here, and that same guy. She was the only one that was able to make it tonight to kind of share her presentation of her project. She did a very nice job. She was in the top twelve for the national competition to go to the SD Nationals, which was pretty impressive. And she had a couple of prizes that she won during that. She was second place overall in the local fair. The Ella Hartlow was first place. We put the top posters, I can mention those real quick, just so you can see them later. But Ella's, she, she was first place overall at our local fair, and she was also a gold medalist at the state fair, which is the top ten in the entire state of Vermont. So that was the first time that in the last, you know, three, four years that I've been doing this, that we've had somebody that's done that well. So that was really impressive. Kaylee took second place, as I said, at the local fair, and she was one of the top twelve in the, for the SD competition. That's, that's kind of a separate than the overall. It's a competition to go to the international state fair, or international fair, which is, this year was in Phoenix. Emily King, she did very well this year. She's done well in the past also. The nice thing is, a couple of these guys are freshmen. Ella and Emily are both freshmen, so they did that well. And she was another one that was in the top twelve for the international fair, so that was really exciting. She also won, and you'll have to go to the website to find them all, because there was so many, but she had like four or five other individual prizes because of her topic, things about pollution and things like that. So she won a lot of different interesting prizes. Then a couple of other people that we have. Emma Metor, she was a silver medalist at the state, which means she was between eleventh and thirtieth. They don't give an exact place, but they just say, okay, these are the places. And so she was a silver medalist, so again, out of the entire state of Vermont. That's pretty impressive. And she was one of the top people here at the local one. And then Brooke Durkey also won a prize, I believe it was for the best use of SI measurement. So that was kind of exciting also. So, you know, a lot of kids, and then our top middle school student was Madison Giatte at the local fair, and she, you know, did a really nice job. So it was really an exciting thing. I put together this short video, just to kind of a quick little thing here, on the stem sick fair, so, you know, it's just a two-minute video, so we can watch that, and then I'll let Kaylee come up and present her, what she did, so you guys can at least hear one of the presentations, and then we will be done.
I forgot to mention the trip that we made. You saw it in there. Down to the elementary schools was something that was put together by the, it was a stem group that invited us to come down, and that was, that was really good for the kids, and, you know, not only the elementary kids, but our kids, because it was two weeks before the fair. They got a chance to present their whole project, and I think that's part of the reason they did so well at the state fairs, because they were practicing. Usually, you know, they have theirs, you know, fair in January, and then they come in and, you know, March, the end of March, and they have to present again and try to remember all the stuff. They don't do too much in between, so this really helped them. So Kaylee, why don't you come up and show yours?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Last night, at the Swan School Board Member, that was reported as one of the highlight of the events for the elementary students. Like St. Morris said, it was really positive feedback from the students there in fifth and sixth grade, having these students come and share their science projects, so.
Yeah, that was, yeah, we went to the Highgate Elementary, went to, to the Swan. We weren't able to finagle our schedule to get up to Franklin. We tried, but it just didn't quite work out this year, but hopefully next year, we can get all three of the schools. But it was definitely good. Maybe doesn't, but you, this is out here, and then we can kind of, I'll hold it up just to...
All right. So my project was on using plant products as antimicrobial agents, which basically is just kind of a more sophisticated way of saying, I tried to use plants to mimic the results of antibiotics, because antibiotic resistance is a problem in the medical community and something that we're going to have to find a way around eventually, which, and I'm looking to go into pharmacy during my secondary education, so I thought this would be a really nice project to do, to kind of get into that. So to start off, I use two different types of bacteria, E. coli and Bacillus cereus. And the reason I did that is because one of them is gram-positive and the other is gram-negative, which means that their cell walls differ, so the things that affect them will be different, because they're not the same. And so, the plant products I used was black pepper, betel leaf, allspice, and garlic, because I looked them up and I found that they had some antimicrobial properties within the realm of the bacterias that I was using. So I kind of wanted to see if I could get results with that. And so I basically just grew the bacteria on plates, if you can probably not see, but I have pictures here. And I soaked a paper disc, which I just cut out from filter paper, and I soaked it in the essential oil of the plant product that I was using, and then I put it on the plate to see how the bacteria would grow around it. And then, after it grew for like a day or so, I measured the zone of inhibition around the disc, which shows you how effective the substance is at killing the bacteria. And then, if there was a zone of inhibition, I took a swab from the edge of the zone, and I grew it again, just to see how fast it would become resistant to the plant product, which is kind of important if you're trying to combat antibiotic resistance. And to compare, I did the same procedure with actual antibiotics. And I found that plant products could be used as antibiotics if they were altered a bit more, simply because they can't really compete with antibiotics on their own, because they have been engineered over years and years and years to work the way they do. So the next step in this project that I would do is to kind of try to combine the DNA of some of the plant substances to make it work better, like the effectiveness of the garlic for the first generation, but the ability to keep killing the bacteria generation after generation, like the allspice did. And so, yeah, I guess that's kind of an overview of it.
Any questions? She's really good. She likes questions.
How long are you going to apply your science knowledge, what you need and what you need?
Well, I'm going to St. Michael's College next year, and I'm entering into their pre-pharmacy program. So I'll be doing a lot with like biology, chemistry, and so my knowledge that I've gained here will definitely help me there.
Very good.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Wonderful project.
I'll leave the posters over here, so if you guys want to look at them during the break or whatever, and I'll just get them in the morning. But thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Red?
Yes?
Question. Okay, so we have these students that went to states, they did very, very well. Is that the end of it? Is there a regional competition or national competition?
There is a national. That was what I was saying, that Kaylee got qualified into the top twelve, but she didn't. They only took two kids to the nationals, so she was, you know, very close to making it, but she didn't make it into the nationals. The same thing with Emily, who was in the top twelve. She, you know, so she was in that qualified group to go to the nationals, but unfortunately, you know, she was not one of the ones that was selected. But again, Emily's, you know, a young ninth-grade student, so I'm hoping that maybe next year she can do well. Usually, what I've, what I've seen at the states is that ninth and tenth graders tend to be the ones they try to draw on to go to the nationals. I think they're just trying to encourage them while they're younger to get involved into the, you know, more of the science fields and keep going on that, so a lot of the kids, you know, they get taken. So I'm very excited for the future, because, you know, three of these kids are ninth graders here, that were there, and a couple of the other kids that did very well in the, in our local fair were ninth graders, so, you know, I think we're going to have...
And you said two went to nationals in the state?
Uh, two from the state went to nationals, I believe, yeah.
Okay. But others have gone, I mean, why only two? Who decided two?
Uh, it's the judges at the state fair, basically. Kind of like we have our top, you know, two people that, you know, get to go to, well, we take more than two, but, you know, our top people, and they do the same thing.
Is that proportion statewide, according to the state population?
The numbers?
The numbers that are accepted to go to the national?
Yeah, I believe they take two per state. It's an international fair.
Two for every state?
Yeah, I believe every state, so California, obviously, is, you know, gets ripped off if they're dozen, in terms of that. And they also, but the reason is, they come from, they're also international. I went, I was very fortunate, I believe it was two years ago or three years ago, to take the place of somebody, one of the judges or one of the stem fair coordinators from South Burlington. He couldn't go, so they asked if I would be the chaperone for his kids. And so I, they, you know, took me out there, and I got to go to Arizona for that, and it's an amazing thing. But there are kids from everywhere, in, you know, Japan, and Saudi Arabia, and Israel, and South America, you know, just all over the world, they all come to this, you know, thing, and it's very, very amazing event. So I really would love to see if, you know, one of these guys, hopefully in the future, will get to make it to that. We did have a young lady, five years ago, I think, that made it to an international event. Taylor, my mind's going to blank on me. Taylor, I know her first name. Yeah, okay. Anyways, but she, she went to nationals, you know, from, for, you know...
So my next question, I remember in my last, uh, process, so let's say we have a student who, who has, school has up the money, we have a...
No, it is completely covered by the stem fair, so they, they take care of all of the finances.
You never want a student to miss out because you...
Right. No, it is all completely covered, so that is good.
Could I suggest that next time you time the, the fair, you have it on a night one? We don't have a meeting?
What do you mean? I got like three judges that week.
I'd like to attend, but, you know, in here, it's six o'clock for the finance committee, and really down the...
Yeah, I understand. The finance committee definitely, it's, it hurts with them, trying to get in there and see it.
And even an hour to go through a fair like you put on, it's a tremendous fair. It's super.
Yeah.
And you can't cover that in an hour. I can't anyway.
Yeah, no, there's a lot to get done.
I'm one of those that goes through the museum and reads every plaque.
Yeah. Well, we will take that into consideration this year.
As a former science teacher, who was grinning, ever wanted...
I definitely need you as my judge. I'm always digging up judges, so believe me, that's like the hardest job of, that I have, is trying to find people that'll, you know, come and spend the night, and we've been fortunate to get enough to do it every year, so it's been a great, great...
We'll see what 2020 brings. Maybe I can.
All right. We'll see, we can, we'll look at the dates and see if we can do something on that, too. So, good. Any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We have facilities update next. I don't know, Mr. Palmer has something for us?
We, we have a little bit of an update. We are moving ahead with the construction project. You may have noticed out back, they've laid some of the foundation, getting ready by the wood chip boiler. The dumpsters are in, portallets are in. The fence goes up tomorrow around the perimeter of that. We made some, kind of started in here, developed some plans for like, for fire drills, egressing, all of that. So make sure that's all on the up and up. We have, the big yellow equipment comes in on Tuesday, and that's when they will start digging up the area between J-Pod and the main building. Total, it'll start on Tuesday.
Same times?
Dennis?
Richard?
What's, what's the story on our gym? Some people didn't do a very good job down there. And before we move on, we gotta fix that gym. That gym is awful. The paint's peeling, and, hey, what are we going to do? We put a lot of money into that gym. Somebody better be stepping up. I'm, I'm upset, because nobody come to us and said, our gym is falling apart down there. It's awful. I'm upset, because nobody come to us. And it isn't so much, it's the people that did it, you know? That's, that's, that's a disgrace down there.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
While the, the paint's peeling, they, it's all on the floor.
The poly's, the poly's blistering.
Yeah, it's blistering. You know, I went down and dustmopped it tonight to look at it, it's awful. You know, and we gotta do something.
I didn't believe Dan Hurst coming back this summer to do some work on it.
I'm sorry, Dan. This is going to be done. We put a lot of money in this, and not this summer. This, this gym, this is supposed to be the pride and joy, and we got a lot of things on it, and to see it the way it looks right now, boy, it makes tears come to my eyes. Because that's awful. You know, and, and it, they did a bad job.
When did that start? Because I was down there for the blood drawing, and I didn't know...
Well, you got, Dennis, you gotta have a few years of experience. You walk that floor, and you'll see, it's not pretty.
I won't argue with you.
And it's, and it's looks like to me, Dennis, that they didn't put a, because it shouldn't, they played hockey and softball, but it shouldn't be scratched as it is. It's like they didn't put a coat on the top.
Okay.
Yeah, it just... Mark went down there.
Not right, by any means.
So did it evolve over time? I mean, did it, maybe up to the first month or two, or did it just...
We, we don't know. We just checked it. I, I come to the finance meeting, I get kicked out of an executive meeting or something, so I decided to go down there.
Well, I'm glad you did.
Yeah.
Because we didn't know about it.
All good, man.
All right. And other than that, progress is happening around the construction, so that's good.
I gotta, what's the story on the track y'all there?
I was hoping John was gonna stick around. I thought he was. Um, I, I knew that he had some quotes, I knew that he was moving forward, so where he's exactly at, I couldn't tell you, but he's moving forward. And I believe everything's still getting done this.
This year?
This year. Yep.
It's okay to call him and pick his ear, yeah?
Yes, absolutely.
As long as you're nice to him.
Well, I'm trying.
Richard, once you do that, September, somebody send us all an email, if there are things that we should know.
Yep.
Right? Tom, you're our coordinator of the...
Well, there's John. John's, John's here.
Wow. Last, last John.
Jim Carter?
Yeah, Jim went to grab him.
I ran a week.
Nice catch.
Question is...
The question is about the gym of the...
The gym?
Not the gym.
Okay.
This fall, the track project.
Yep. So I'm so waiting to get quotes from Sports Connection, and talking to a few people about what building, what type of building we need to build so we can store the equipment. I've talked to a couple of people, they say, instead of maybe going to a wood structure, maybe building it of cinder blocks and making, doing it that way. So, and we have an area where we'd like to put it, because we know that it's a, the area that we thought about putting was going to be too low, so we need some fill, and we need to have that up to grade so that we can put the building on, so water doesn't go into it and have it flood.
So whereabouts of the area you're talking?
Uh, we want to go straight next nut. If you did, it'll look towards, right towards the track.
Yep.
Um, there's that area next to the blue building.
Yep.
Up a little higher, but fill that area in and build it right there. I've talked to a couple of people about if that could happen, such as Henry, because I know he puts the equipment, he goes, John, if that were to happen, then we're not going to put the equipment there. We want your building there instead. So I think it's a great idea, because that is a low area to begin with, and I don't want to build it right there on the grass, it's going to be built up.
And, and I think, Rick, I, I know it was talked about before, way back, that they were talking brick and...
Yep.
Cinder block.
Cinder block, yeah.
Cinder blocks, tin, and then someone said, maybe you should just go with a tin all the way around it, with a tin roof. I mean, so there are lots of different, I just want to make sure that whatever we do, it's going to be, one, the price, but also, is it going to be secure and safe, and I don't need a windstorm blowing it down either, so.
What size is the building, John?
I like to go something like twelve foot by thirty two. And I do have some people, I know, that would be willing to help donate some time to help build this, so we're only maybe spending money on material and not as much money on labor. So, that'd be great.
How high?
Uh, don't know yet. I believe about maybe a couple garage doors and a single door to get in and out.
You're gonna have it, because that, that pole vault pit's not, it's not small.
No.
Takes up a lot of room.
Yep.
So that's the biggest thing, you don't want to leave that, some schools leave it out, well, you don't want to leave it out there. Well, you'll, I think you'll get a call bomb player.
Yep.
Only that.
Do you have to install it for your meet?
Well, out there, we're probably, I hate to leave it out, you know, or get cut up or, you know.
I can understand the concern, but that means you, before every meet, you have to install it. You have to make sure that box is pretty solid if they're gonna be.
What's that? What do you mean?
You're talking about the pole vault, pole vault box.
No, just the pit. The box and stuff, we, we'll stay right there in the runway. It will stay right there.
Oh, okay.
But you'll, you'll have a, a trailer or something and just trailer that, that pit out.
I misunderstand.
This is the jump. It's all foam and you don't, you don't wanna leave that out there.
Okay, good.
I could give you the box.
One, one of the other questions came up was the floor in the gym, whether Dan Hurst coming back this summer or not.
Dan Hurst coming back, uh, April vacation to take a look at the floor. And think about maybe some ideas and what we need to do to keep it covered during the off season.
It ain't good, it's not good down there right now, John. It, it, it looks, it's bad.
They're not taking any responsibility for the polyurethane blister?
Uh, that part I did know.
Yeah.
I got a picture of it, but, oh, I can show you.
Or the, the area down, if you wanna look at it.
Yeah. It, 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 it looks, you know, it's, it don't look good down there and it's, paint's peeling and, you know. I, I just think, like I told Dan, it, I ain't, I ain't saying it's us. I think they didn't do a very good job. Because if you look where they play baseball or hit balls or stuff, it's all scratched up.
Yep.
And it shouldn't be, you know. It's like they, they wore the polyurethane right off. You know, it just, it, it's just that much money we spent. It, it should be right.
Yep, it shouldn't last that long.
Okay.
Yep, absolutely.
Definitely run it by Paul. Paul seems to have a good idea about floors, so. He'll get after the right person.
Okay.
But I think that was, do we have anything else for John, or is he's?
Is there anything you can do in that locker room? See, put some stalls, put a stall in or, or check with Paul. That, that's just.
Is it the boys or the girls?
The boys. You, you can't.
I do know that they were going to, were looking to do, do something with the girls' locker room. I think we need to just repair, see what we can do for the boys.
Yeah, they just put a divider and a door, so.
Yeah.
Yeah. You have a little privacy.
Yep.
You know, like, uh, but the girls, you know, you looked in there and then the biggest thing in there, it just needs hood cleaning. You know, it, it, it just, you know, that's a big thing. And then a little bit of elbow grease.
Yep.
I'm glad that John mentioned girls because, uh, we did allocate someone on the way.
Yeah.
This year, do we have some significant changes?
Yep.
Where, in both locker rooms or?
Starting with the girls.
Yeah, girls this year, and hopefully the boys next year.
I know Paul was looking to get some, some drawings made up of what that would look like.
Yep.
So that's what we're waiting on. But he has, I, I know that our engineer architect has been down in there taking a look at it.
And, and I think you need to do away with the drop ceiling. Cause they look like they hammered on that, you know, and they, I think they get mad or whatever and they put holes right through the drop ceiling.
We've had many discussions about the drop ceiling.
I guess that's how this started.
Well, what's that, John?
That's how this started.
Yep.
Cinder block up there.
You would've enjoyed that. You would've enjoyed that.
Yeah.
Alright, alright.
Yeah.
We like looking at them, John.
Yes, that's, 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 that's it all, doesn't it?
No.
Just noticing the last time we was on there was two thousand nine, ten years.
They're gonna replay it somewhere. Take care of that.
Ten years ago they were there.
Thank you.
Thanks, John.
Alright, then. You have, you have anything else to add, Dan? You were all set on that one? Alright, uh, I have an inch of update. So check warrants is first on the list there. Do have the check warrant report that I need, and I would entertain a motion to, to, to accept. Uh, check warrant report, amount of seven hundred and twenty-three thousand, four hundred and thirty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. For the dates March sixteenth, twenty nineteen to April twelfth, twenty nineteen. Do I have that motion?
I'll make it.
Motion by John, do I have?
I'll second it.
Any discussion? And none? Or favor the motion, signify to say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Guys have a motion carries. I will circulate that. Alright, if you do a local budget. Yes, I will.
Absolutely. So we have been talking at the local boards. Uh, Franklin has warned a local budget. At this point, uh, none of the other elementary schools have warned a local budget. We're looking at timing, we're looking at, um, the fact that a merged budget will likely be warned. Because, you know, sometimes we feel like we're swaying back and forth based on what the legislature is or isn't doing. A few, you know, this time last month, they were telling us absolutely there's gonna be a delay. At this time, the House and Senate are, I think they're waiting it out. I think that's a pretty fair thing to say at this point. They may make some movement, but it's been stuck for quite some time, so. We've discussed in some of the other town, uh, elementary board meetings, the fact that if we warn a local budget right now, it would be like a week before we'd be voting on the merged budget and that that might send a difficult message to folks. Um, we do have local budgets ready. Um, people have been reviewing them. And did you bring one for us to review?
No, we, there, there have been no changes.
There are no changes right now. So we have time, um, should we need to do a merged MVU budget? Uh, I mean, not a non-merged, but just an MVU budget. Um, we have, you know, we've spent a lot of ti, actually, MVU, I think, has spent more time working on its budget than any of the other elementary schools. So at this point, we didn't bring a, a local one to look at because you've been reviewing it more than anyone else.
I believe the, the last draft we had, the last one that I found was from December twentieth, and it was.
February?
It was February.
Yeah, it was, it was labeled draft four, John called that it should be draft five, but it was said February two thousand nineteen in the left-hand corner. This was what was used to, um, to bring to the temporary transition board as well, yeah.
And at this point, the, as many of you who are on the transition board, um, that board is pretty much finished looking at the merged budget. We're expecting not to make any major changes, uh, unless a principal discovers something urgent. We chaired the merged budget with the administrative team this morning. Um, and they're, you know, they're understanding that we're pretty much, um, looking at the merged budget without any real changes. And until, um, the new elected board looks at it, and then they will give us direction there. So MVU is poised, should something occur, to have a meeting and adopt a local budget or make any changes you feel. Um, we are poised to do that, should we need to.
So there probably won't be any action on it this evening.
I wouldn't, I, I put that just in case.
It'd be better not to.
Yeah. I, I, given the fact that the other boards are not, I think it would be a difficult thing. MVU needs to coordinate well with Swanton, for example, because you would both have Australian ballot. Anything one board does, you, you wanna sort of do it in concert.
Yep.
I did say, for those of you, just as an update, um, the admin, the first board meeting of the elected board, we're, um, gonna have the principals attend, so that when you, their merged board is looking at the, I feel like the language on transition board, elected board, I'm. Apologize for that. But the new board, um, when they're looking at the budget, we wanted to have principals in the room. So that we could really say, what does this mean? With a little more detail, if the board has questions or principals can have, uh, deeper explanation than Laura and I could on their behalf, so.
I think that's really important.
We did.
Any questions about where we're at with budgets?
I don't know. We hadn't talked about tax rate impact. I don't know if you want to, just so you have that information, or if you're, you wanna wait for that, but.
It's always a fun one.
Yeah.
Are there questions? Are there, is there interest in talking about tax rate impacts? It's, does seem like one of those things that you almost don't wanna talk about until we know which way we're going.
Okay.
Because it does get confusing.
Absolutely.
And I heard you say earlier this evening that there is gonna be a difference.
Yes.
Quite a difference in some towns' tax rates, whether we merge or not merge, so.
Yes.
I guess, rather than just speculate, you might as well wait till it gets to that point.
Sounds good.
You're okay with it? Thank you, Laura. Um, any other questions, I guess?
Do we need a motion?
I don't think so.
We don't need a motion, I don't think so.
Um, just one thing I did wanna mention. I've mentioned it at the other schools this week. Um, the only difference between what you'll see in the merged and people that are on that temporary transition board would know this, but, um, what you saw in your last version did not have revenues net from your assessments, so you're showing the full expenditure budget. Um, when we've merged them, we are netting that, we are, um, just showing the net. So line by line for the assessments, you would see a difference, but it's the revenues being applied differently. The rest of it has remained the same. But I just wanted to make sure people were aware. In case you're looking line by line, you get to the assessments, you're gonna see quite a, quite a difference. So just as a little reminder there about that.
Any other questions for Laura? Thank you very much for being here. New business, I guess you can ask one. Contracts for administration, teachers, support staff, and non-munis staff. Ask for executive session. Sounds like an executive session.
It, it, it has been in, in all of our districts. I just like to make sure that it's on the main part of the agenda for mentioning, but, um, you know, we are gonna talk about what, uh, our contractual obligation is and, um, talk about contracts that we hope will be issued.
Yeah, I don't think we can go into very much more detail than that right now.
But we do have deadlines coming up, so that's what we're doing through the month of April.
Executive session. Uh, I guess that brings us to the administrators' report. Look to the administration.
Great. Um, so we heard about the science fair and the state STEM fair this evening. And, um, in your report for the end are the more detailed pieces of information about our state finalists. Um, we also had another recent STEM event. Every year, the Northwest Technical Center, um, sponsors a middle school competition where they participate in a variety of different activities, um, and the local middle schools that the Northwest Tech Center, um, compete against each other. So we sent a team with representatives from all four of our middle school teams to compete at Northwest Technical Center against, um, city school, town school, and Fairfield School, and the MVU students took home first place. They were very excited about it. There's video of them jumping up with joy in the status. Um, but it's a really engaging day for them. They make all sorts of, uh, different STEM-based projects and they compete with other students. So it's a very exciting, uh, very exciting day every year, but particularly so this year. Um, in terms of standardized testing, the schedule is there, the rough schedule of what we'll be doing over the next couple of months in terms of standardized testing. Grade nine has finished its S-Back testing. Um, and they really did a nice job of maintaining a positive testing environment. Teachers and students alike really worked hard on that. Um, other things that are coming up. When we were, actually this past week, the eighth grade took the science assessment, the Vermont Science Assessment. That was this past week. Um, and when we return from the vacation, the eleventh grade will take their science assessment. And then the middle school, seventh and eighth graders will take the math and English Language Arts S-Back tests. Um, and then our PE department is picking up with the fitness gram, which is the physical education assessment happening in grade seven and nine. So those are the things that, um, are happening in terms of state testing over the next couple of months. Busy time of year for that. Uh, we held parent conferences at the end of March, um, on the evening of the twenty-eighth, and then we had afternoon conferences on the twenty-ninth. It's a very busy time in the building. Lots of parents who are in to hear about their students' progress and make plans for a successful end of year. On the fourteenth, the SU had its integrated field review. MVU was the kind of home base for that event. Um, it was really exciting to show off all the wonderful things that we're doing here and to meet with, um, te, the team that came from other regional schools and just reflect and talk about our practice. Um, and they will be, um, making their recommendations soon, I think. And recommendations. These, uh, following that are the STEM fair results that Mr. Ballard talked about. And then to finish up, uh, we've had, April is full with professional learning, so we had our final visits of the year from our science consultants that's been supporting grades nine and ten in, um, making sure that their curriculum is aligned to the NGSS, but also making sure that it's rigorous and differentiated. Uh, Dr. Tina Bogren from Marzano was here on April fifth, and she worked with all of our new teachers from across the SU. They were in the library. They really focused on, um, how to maintain routines and procedures and relationships, um, as the year goes on. Oftentimes, the start of years, really, that's a focus. How do we create a really positive school environment for our students? But it's also important to revisit those later in the year. Um, and then we had a visit from Math Best Practices, and Kathy Fandler works with us from Teachers Development Group. And he worked in high school math classes, and we saw some really excellent math instruction going on. It was a really fabulous visit this time. Um, lots of positive growth in our math classrooms. Students talking, sharing their work, um, explaining their thinking. It was a very positive visit. We were quite thrilled.
Conferences, middle school, high school, both, do you, uh, do a percentage of parents participate? We had a discussion about that last night. Do you have a question about what percentage do you do that?
Um, I would say that it differs by grade level and that the seventh through ninth grade teams fill every slot that they have available. But I would say, in talking with teachers anecdotally, we didn't do a survey or anything, they had, many of our tenth grade teachers had very full slates of, uh, conferences over the course of two days. Um, as students get older, we don't see as much participation.
I think that's a point. The question you said we had a full slate, so do they keep a spot for everybody? And did they say we got thirty slots in the first slate to get them, or is that?
There are a limited number of slots, yes.
Well, I guess I'm just curious, point that quick, based on the amount of time that we have.
So in other words, if we only have Thursday night and Friday afternoon to offer time slots, we try to give each parent at least ten minutes or fifteen minutes, and then they, they fill up. And when anybody else becomes, at least in the middle school, we'll ask any other parent to see if they can maybe meet after school, middle of the day, before school. And our, our teams usually.
So maybe, if more parent gives you a conference.
No.
If more parents want to conferences, then you have time, then we should give you that time.
Our, uh, in the middle school, our guidance counselors help, uh, set all those conferences up. And if they're unable to meet the parent at the time when they want to, they'll set something else. So usually the week after, our teams are just as busy, before school, after school, middle part of the day, little parent conferences, and they're not. Uh, no, I had some, I went, yeah, I wasn't there. No, I did not.
Any other questions for the administrators?
Yeah, what was the final score?
There you go.
Enough. We're on camera.
It's pretty windy out there, huh?
It's a little windy, though.
Thank you, Logan.
I was gonna ask, um, do we still have someone doing full-time for truancy? And how are we doing in that department? I know that we had some situation there as far as support. We have, I mean, I guess how's that area going as far as performance on the truancy?
We do have a, a full-time truancy person, uh, contracted through NCSS. They do some counseling for us as well, so that helps offset some of the costs of that. Uh, that person is transitioning to, uh, a different role. Uh, they're gonna be using, they're gonna be more of an counseling role down at our connect, our off-site alternative ed program, so we will be looking to fill that role. Um, what I can tell you. What I can tell you is that they have been busier as of late, as more, later in the year, kids get more absences. But I do know, you know, so as those absences add up for kids, they're going to get busier throughout the year. Right now, I'm seeing probably three to four letters a week of me being mailed home to parents around truancy. What I can also tell you is there was one person, just a middle school person, who the family was in court today over the truancy and not being here. So that's how far it's gone, is gone to court.
Yeah, I mean, I know we're trying to be more encompassing as far as truancy, helping the families out, et cetera, understand the problem, not just, you know, trying to drag kids in here. And I just try to figure out how that approach is going and whether that's making improvements. Do we have any numbers you can share maybe next time as far as like the trends on that?
I can bring, I can bring attendance data next time, for sure.
Great. The county has a really good truancy panel that works well together, and of, a few years ago, the frustration was that you could do all the preventative work, but the state's attorney's office was just not going to bring it any further with the court system. And we've been able, as a county, to bring them on board, and so DCF is involved, Department of Children and Families, and the court system is involved too for cases where everything has been tried and kids are not attending. So it's, you know, it's, it's improving, but it'd be interesting to look at the data.
Right, the county's been a leader in this whole issue. Plus, they've been the most successful and leader in this issue for the last 30 years.
It's, it's an uphill challenge, you know? With little kids, they don't miss school because they don't want to come, so their challenges are one set of challenges, and, and middle and high school kids are a different set of challenges. Usually, parents are trying to get them here. So it's, it's a multi-pronged approach. I, I think it's pretty impressive how the county has put a lot of resources in, from all kinds of agencies into it.
We're trying to capture them as quickly as possible before they get to high school.
Yes.
Any other questions? Thank you very much. Brings us up to superintendent's report.
My report has STEM fair students shining faces on the front of it, and so I thought most of my update had to do with legislative updates as well as the STEM fair results in that press release, so I thought I would leave their pictures up there while I talk about other things. Because many of the legislative updates that I gave you are already outdated. At this time of year, things move pretty quickly, or they don't move at all in the legislature. So a few things I wanted to update you on, we are still watching the lead-in-water bill for schools. They are still having arguments about the parts per billion that are going to be acceptable levels for school districts, and they are arguing over the funding. Everybody agrees that school districts should not have to bear the brunt of any remediation that needs to happen. Right now, I think the latest bill has 70% funding coming from the state and the Superintendent's Association, Principals' Association, School Boards' Association, they're all arguing make that 100%. Even though the actual number of dollars is not that big, it's, it's, it's symbolic really of no more unfunded mandates for schools. And everybody agrees that lead in water is something that we don't want for students, but it also looks like schools are being held to a much higher level than the municipalities that give us water. So it's, it's an interesting bill, and we're paying attention to it. At this point, Act 173, which is the special ed finance law that was passed last year, was it last year? It may have even been the year before. It, they are discussing whether to delay the implementation of the change in finance, not the delay the implementation of the professional learning that needs to happen, the support for schools that needs to happen, but they are considering delaying a change in the grant allocation. So right now, special education is funded partly by local budgets and partly with a block grant, a very small one, and then part, most of the finance is a reimbursement model. I spend $100, I get 54% to 56% of it back from the state reimbursement. And that's sort of how special education's been funded for 20-plus years here in Vermont. That has resulted in a lot of growth in cost, and the finance system is not the only reason, obviously, why costs have grown, but some believe that that's one of the main reasons. So we are going to be switching in Vermont to a block grant. So instead of I spend money, I get reimbursed for some of it, it will be, here's X amount of money to the school district, this is the amount of money you have to spend, make use of it. And then, of course, the state would give us increases every so often, but it, it is a big shift for Vermont. So I'm going to be looking at the, I was asked to look at the, the rules that are being developed for special ed finance under this new model, and those colleagues of mine that I know in special ed that have read them have concerns and have testified to those concerns that they're not quite ready for implementation. So if that is the case, then likely a delay would happen. I believe, Don, we talked last night, that, was it the House that approved the delay? But it has not gone to the Senate this time? I think that's the case. Act 39, the bill that would be delaying implementation of Act 46, is, for all intents and purposes, stuck in conference. There's no movement, we have not seen any movement between the parties. They had a meeting, but at this point, no deal has been hammered out between them. We have been assured that should they not come to agreement on a delay, they will create language and put in the miscellaneous education bill around a default budget for districts that are forced to merge and have a merged budget that may not pass. So protections around being able to borrow and so forth. So that's, I think, the legislative updates that I have. In central office, we are working really hard, we're going to talk later about contracts, preparing contracts. We're think, working with all the administrators on hires and new hires and all of those timelines for all of our different agreements that we have with people, preparing for the possible merger around non-union staff that would then become part of the union in, in the case of a merged district, working on insurance, coverage, and shifts for next year with Sheldon or without Sheldon. So there's a lot of work that's happening in the business office and human resources that will just escalate between now and the end of June 30th. And the last thing that I wanted to share is that I was appointed by the governor to sit on the Advisory Board for Special Education. It's an appointed board. I did not know, but Dan French put my name forward as a superintendent who has a background in special education. I just came home on a Saturday, and my husband said, "There's a letter from the governor here," which do, you know? But I, I think that will be very good for our district, actually, just to, especially as special education law and finance is shifting. It's a board that meets probably quarterly in the whole, whole of the year, so it's, it's not much of a commitment in terms of that, but it is certainly nice to be thought of and appointed by the governor, and also, I think it will be good to get sort of the inside, when new legislation comes through, that's the body that they put new ideas in front of, so I think it will help us know what's happening. So that is what I have for an update, except, see, I lied, I said that was my last thing. Unfortunately, our student representative had to resign. She just has too many commitments, she was finding she was not able to be here, and I told her that we regretted not having her here to, to share her voice, but she, she did want to thank everyone for the opportunity and the learning that she had, but regretfully is not able to continue.
And I guess it's close enough to the end of the school year that probably to try to find someone different, like, it might not be a great idea, but depending on what happens next year, it would be interesting to have someone new on the board.
It'd be nice to see how student voice could be a part of it.
Yeah. Yeah, to see where we're at.
If you want somebody, let's know.
Yeah. Any questions?
This can be tricky with, you know, merge board, dealing with that many schools, they're not going to have very much time to, you know, get updates, so hopefully that board will take the opportunity to make sure that they get informed about things going on and, you know, have student voice as well.
We won't be just one school.
Exactly.
But we will be all one school.
Four schools, one community.
Any questions for the superintendent?
Yes? Just to back up a little bit, when we talk teachers' contracts, I just, my concern with the Ag teacher, we were gonna, we did our interviews, do we have a tentative ag? So you, we've got to hash out, we've got something settled where fires contract or...
Yeah, I can talk to you afterwards.
Okay.
But yes, we were able to move forward and make a decision and make a commitment in summer, yes.
Just my other concern is we've lost a teacher because he went and joined up service, and we don't have ag mechanic.
Yes, we are working on that. Absolutely, we are.
Those are my two issues that I have, and I figured when I heard, you have teacher things, we've got to work through with that.
It's one of our priorities.
Okay. Here we try and get one, then we lose another, so we go one step ahead and two back. Thank you.
All right.
Real quick, going back to Principals' Report, I think it would be helpful, if you guys don't mind, you know, usually looking back at the previous month, if you could put, you know, a couple of events with dates on upcoming, you know, what's moving ahead for this month? Because I feel like a lot of times, and I don't have any kids in high school yet, so I don't follow all the events, but usually they've already gone by by the time I, you know, know about them, so...
That's a great idea.
Yeah, just, just so, you know, we have an idea at these meetings, you know, what to look forward to coming up.
Well, John, particularly as the spring end-of-year event, I mean, it's just, there's so much that happens, well, all the time, but it will just increase between now and the end of the year.
Yeah, in that way, if there's something particular, like, oh, I definitely want to go, you know, it'll cue me up to put that on my schedule versus, and, I mean, I don't expect to get invited to everything, but, you know, a lot of times you don't know about these things until after the fact.
The month of May will be quite busy. We'll have National Junior Honor Society induction, National Honor Society inductions, end-of-year choral concerts, band concerts.
Dan, could you set a schedule out to us? Email the schedule to the board members?
Yeah, I guess we should...
Date, time, and places of the events? The event, the date and time?
We may need to circle back to Don's question about the locker room, I don't need to bring this back, but I think there's a misunderstanding about what, how that's funded.
Oh, okay.
I think the board changed their mind at the last meeting, I was just looking for.
All right, so Laura does have some information on the locker room projects?
You had asked me about the funding for that portion. I believe what had happened was the board had allocated money for the locker rooms and some other issues from the capital reserve fund, but then when they realized that the bond project was going to be going over, they changed their mind and were allocating the remaining funds that was on the 311 meeting, the board approved, covering the bond overages with that money instead, so...
You talked about next year's budget.
Next year's budget, there's money...
Forty thousand dollars.
Right, no, there's a lot more than that, but nothing from this year. Hundred and eighty, I think.
311, was I not here? It could be, like, quite a heated discussion in the conference room, and if someone was ahead of me, because Paul was here, the ball was kind of...
It must have been executive session, because in the conference room.
I think the meeting in February.
There was action when we came out.
Unless I didn't get...
Not given executive session.
After executive session.
No, we, we allocated funds for next, in next year's budget for the repair of the girls' locker room.
I thought it was both, myself, I thought it was 180,000 for the locker rooms.
We're going to start with one.
Okay.
We're going to do one and then do second.
So Don had asked me if it was this year.
That was more than we thought we would have.
Yes.
And so I think Mark was there.
Yep.
Who said we wanted the women's locker room to take priority.
Okay, so that's next year, that's where I missed both. You had asked me if it was this year, and I just wanted to make sure that you understood that it wasn't.
Good thing it isn't these particular...
Absolutely.
As far as events, I did want to mention that the school musical started this evening and is running Friday. I don't know, we'll, we'll, this won't hit the airwaves in time for people to see it and know about it, but it is today, tomorrow, and Saturday, and it is the ad expansion.
Set is amazing. If you don't have a chance to see it, but have a chance to at least see the theater, the set is amazing, and our ag facilities and maintenance class built the set.
Oh, nice.
It's pretty, it has a second story and stairs and balcony, it's very...
I noticed the cast, the costumes, as we were switching meetings, and that was pretty impressive, just to see the costumes.
What time is that?
Seven o'clock tomorrow.
Seven o'clock.
And Saturday, is it a matinee, or is it a...
I think it's a matinee.
Both, it's a matinee and evening show.
Okay.
One o'clock on Saturday, two...
I think it's two.
Two.
Yeah, sadly it won't, I guess people won't be able to see it on TV and hear about it, but it's, at least people around the table know about it. All right, any other questions for, I guess, Julie, Jen, Dan, Jay?
I guess my question for Laura, that's why I had asked it earlier, if we have a large budget, that money will still be available?
It is in what was proposed to the Temporary Transition Board. What happens to it after that? I guess it's to be determined.
From the elected board, yep.
Exactly. Just because it's there, just because it's there, it doesn't mean anything. Another group asked it.
That's why I was thinking of something to share.
To the transition.
I think you had wanted to until the bond overdid.
Okay, yeah, well, now, the next meeting date, it's the MBSD Informational Meeting will be on the Saturday morning, April 27, 10:00 a.m., right here in the library, which you'll be interested to see what the turnout is. We did have one on the 15th, which is a Monday evening, and I was, I was pleased with the turnout. We were, we estimated about 30 people, I don't know if somebody actually had a count, but it was about 30 people that came, so good questions, good concerns, I was very pleased with it. So we'll see what happens on the 27th. Now, between the 27th and the first will be the 30th, Tuesday, the 30th, there will be the day of vote, so that's something that, it'll be important to get that information out, that people that don't make the information, if they stay home, that we will be going to elect, elect board members, elect new boards, and our Articles of Agreement will be going on that same day. So Australian ballot on Tuesday, the 30th. So we'll hope for a good turnout, pretty important stuff right there as far as... Well, Australia... Well, Australian ballot, oh.
Is the meeting on the 30th here?
Meeting on the 30th.
No, there's no meeting on the 30th. It's an election. People will vote at their polling places. The Highgate Arena and Franklin Town Hall and Swanton Village Complex.
Was the informational meeting recorded?
No, they did not.
No, they were invited, but they were, I would say, scheduled in conflict or something.
Can we make sure we make a plug about the fact that the articles agreement that we're crafted, the intent is that if that is approved, that those, those articles agreement would take place of the default articles agreement in the case of a merger? And the warning says it, but I know that there's concerns. I heard some feedback from some folks that went to the informational meeting that that was the sticking point, is that people might not know what a yes vote means. It doesn't mean that we're voting to merge. It doesn't mean that we're accepting the forced merger. It's just that should we be forced to merge, or when we decide that that's the time, or if the board elects to merge, move forward with that, that those default articles agreement would get replaced with the articles agreement that people would be voting for. So I think, just wanna make sure that's clear, because if that wasn't recorded, I think it was mostly Franklin people that was at that meeting. So I wanna make sure that Swanton and Highgate, you know, voters also recognize that. And of course, encourage them to come to the 27th informational meeting.
Right, right, that would be ideal. If there's any questions, to come on the 27th and ask the questions. The presentation was, was pretty clear. I mean, we went through the articles, each one of the articles. So I think that having seen it and heard it is gonna help a lot of people to understand it. But it's one of those things to just read it once. You know, we've, we've been living it for a while. And it's becoming clear. So for somebody to just read it and, oh, wow, okay, to try to understand that, it's gonna be a challenge, so.
Did reach out to the messenger and their education reporter's gonna reach out to me. So hopefully, we'll be able to have an article that sort of explains some of those key differences and what a yes vote means and what a no vote means. And it's, I did also change the presentation and to show that, you know, voting yes replaces the imposed default articles with ones that the board proposed. And that voting no would have us keeping those default articles.
And highlighting the differences, the key differences.
And we highlighted some of those key differences. Yep, absolutely.
Is your courier gonna do something faster?
I did not hear from the courier, but I can do that tomorrow.
I think when people get a little nervous reading through those amended articles that we're proposing for to be voted on on the 30th. But if anybody hears this, that what I say means anything. What, what we vote on is way better than what will be imposed if we vote against.
And I think the tricky part is that, you know, even on the warning, we don't include the default articles. So that's why, you know, making the distinction of what the key differences are is gonna be important. And no one's gonna take two of them side by side and scan the differences, you know? It's just not.
You have to highlight somewhere, somehow, the differences. But what will be imposed, nobody's gonna like. Okay, so the vote. And then after the vote, there will be a newly elected board and they will be meeting here May 1st at 6:30. And then our next, and your board meeting will be May 16th at 7:00.
No, I do have a question about that.
Yeah?
I will be in Lake Maury at the superintendent's conference on the 16th. And I assume you'd like me to attend the board meeting. I'm wondering if we could reschedule?
I would like that.
I would like that too. We could do the week before or the week after? The week before, I'm looking at my calendar. And we don't wanna run into some big events at the school either, so.
The week after would might.
The week before, the Thursday is a Highgate meeting. But the Wednesday is available and the Tuesday is available absolutely that week.
I can't do the second Wednesday.
You cannot, Wednesday, the 8th?
Second Wednesday, I'll check the USPA.
The, the 8th is also National Honor Society inductions.
Right.
Middle school National Honor Society on the 7th.
Okay.
Does the school calendar look like the following week?
The week of the 20th?
Yeah.
The week of the 20th?
Yes, senior awards on May 20th?
Yes, Monday night, the 20th.
Franklin meeting on the 21st, I believe.
Thursday, the 23rd would be available. Is that a bad night for MVU?
Not that I'm aware of. I'm gonna check the calendar. I'm starting to develop my list.
I can, I can give you a hard copy when we break for executive session of the, of the spring. You won't like it, but you can have it.
So maybe tentatively, the Thursday, the 23rd?
Tentatively.
If nothing big is showing, showing up?
Should be okay. Right now, I think it's clean.
All right.
That will work better than earlier. Have a chance to digest what happens on the 27th.
Absolutely.
All right. I guess the next thing is to anticipate executive session. I think we've heard that we're having one. So before we do that, are there any other, pardon, comments, questions or concerns? Before we do, maybe do accept a motion to enter executive session? Very good. Pertain motion to enter executive session for a purpose of contract and personnel issue. Do we have that motion?
I'll make that motion.
By Richard?
I'll second it.
Send by Mark. We would like to invite in the superintendent. Are we gonna need?
I'm happy to stay, if that's what you want me to do.
Invite you in if you get there. I guess, are we gonna need a principal?
Yes.
Okay.
Rock, paper, scissors or?
But let's invite Jay in and, well.
Tell you something I did three years ago.
All right, I'm just trying to clean up the motion here. Danny, Clay, Julie, Dan's willing to come. So let's have Dan and Jay and hopefully it won't take too long.
Hopefully.
Yeah.
All favor of that motion, second by my senior.
Aye.
All opposed? I love it. Executive session, thank you everyone.